Okay, I'd like to call this meeting ordered. And first, I'd like to have a time of reflection, please. Okay, thank you. And I would like to ask for a motion to adopt the agenda, but I do have an amended agenda that I'll just verbalize. Instead of the normal where the CEO talks and then I lead the discussion, I'm going to reverse it where I lead the discussion, then turn it over to Jay. So that's the amended agenda. Would ask for a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion passed, thank you. Okay, next we're safety briefing. Just on the screen, you'll see the safety briefing. Security is available to assist in any emergency arise, but just take a few seconds to read it and then move on. Okay, at this time, I believe, we have Dr. Faizan, who's with us online virtually. All the other board members are present. And I'd like to take comments from the public, please. And the first one, I believe, is Mr. Mike Hightower?
Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is Mike Hightower. I am a, had the great opportunity, privilege and honor of sitting at that board. Your board served for 16 years. Four of those years as chair. And then had the extraordinary opportunity to come inside and be the vice president for governmental legislative relations. So why am I here? And last week, as I was sitting in my house up in North Carolina, my second house in North Carolina, I read the media where there was going to be a possible resignation of our present CEO, JEA. The reason that I'm here is to respectfully offer a thoughtful observation and suggestion. Within the JEA family, there is one extraordinarily talented, successful and documented leader with 32 years of professional achievement. Vicky Cavy is that person. As a collective board, you all have already unanimously voted to have her as your board liaison and special advisor. It's very obvious that you have already looked at her background. The reason that I'm here is during those 16, those 20 years that I was here at JEA, I had that personal opportunity to be the recipient of Vicky's extraordinary talent, but her leadership, her mentoring and her coaching. To the other couple of the board members here who will remember, I was indeed a work in progress. But during those entire 16 years, Vicky was there. But what she brought to me and was able to help me, as well as the other colleagues that I sat on this board, was an understanding of the institutional knowledge and an understanding of what JE is all about. When you sort of look at our 100 plus, 125 history, JEA is unique to the municipal utility industry. There is nothing, there is no one like it. The institutional knowledge that comes with being a part of this organization, you, you have to have lived it, you have to understand it, you learn it, you have to believe in it, and then you live it every day. What I realized and what Vicky shared with me during those 16 years that I was on the board was that because of that, I tried to be a better board member. But then what I was the recipient of is that when I came inside and I moved from sitting on the board to sitting back here, I realized what I didn't know. Again, it was Vicky Cavy who came to me with a smile and an open hand and a lot of patience to help me understand that transition from sitting on the board with your roles and responsibilities and accountability, but to understand an either greater responsibility and understanding and accountability as an employee. As we sort of look back of why that is important to have someone like Vicky who has that leadership, that institutional knowledge, let me just very quickly, kind of for those board members who don't understand it, back in the seventies, JEA was unfortunately the pride of the nation. We had the highest utility rates and unfortunately, we had a management team that was in disarray. J. Todd Bowles and that board at that time brought in Roar Slous. Very quickly, he helped right that ship. And when riding that ship, he put together a leadership team. And out of that leadership team came the following three new CEOs, executive directors. Walt Prusell, Jim Dickinson, Paul McElroy. Why were they selected by these boards is because they institutionalized and their understanding of what makes JEA the best in the nation. Now, I won't go into all the details, we all know this, what happened in the last couple of years. JEA has been through a knot, but the tenacity and the understanding of what makes JEA what it is, and thanks to the people sitting here in this audience who understand what it takes every day to get up and be public service. During that time, this board brought back Paul McElroy to help right that ship. When Paul came back, what was Paul's first hire? Vicky Cavy. So I'm here to respectfully make an observation and a respectful suggestion. My first observation is, ladies and gentlemen, Mr. Chairman, you can't change history. But today, or when that appropriate time comes, you can make history. I offer a personal observation of 20 years, 55 years in this city. I strongly encourage a positive suggestion as Vicky Cavy as a possible CEO for JEA. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Michael. Next, Valerie Gutierrez, please.
Good afternoon, everybody. You, most of you guys might remember me. I was with IBW Business Manager, but now I work out in the field as a protection and controls technician. And so I've been with JEA for 26 and a half years. And I returned back in the field back in June of 2023. And I'm loving working on my tools. I get to see what's going on out there on a regular basis. So since being out there, I've seen a lot of, you know, and also been a part of different projects that have been going on to help the growth of our service area. And I'm sure it's also been going on with the water, wastewater areas as well. So I'm sure, you know, despite all the external distractions, I want you to know that the field employees continue to work every day to keep the electric and water system going strong. And as our mission statement says, we are here to improve lives, build community and work to be the best utility in the nation. So just as we are getting over the potential sale of JEA, we find ourselves again in uncertain times. So any changes will bring back some of those concerns and worries to the employees. So please keep that in mind. So whatever happens here today, communication will be extremely important for all JEA employees on what changes will be coming. So let's, you know, the employees look to the JEA leadership and the board for guidance and stability. So let's make sure that the transition is a smooth one. Another issue I'd like to mention is that we should never feel guilty for having a band that recognizes the JEA employees. I know there was some issues with the Christmas party and out of all my years, I don't recall that being something that we engaged in. So I just want to thank the leadership, whoever put that together, that it is nice, it was nice to see other employees, their spouses, and also to feel recognized and appreciated. So I hope that. So I hope moving forward that JEA will continue to find ways to celebrate all the great things the employees do every day and not to let outside pressure prevent us from doing so. And also, I just want to say thank you, Jay, for your leadership for all these years and that I hope the next CEO will appreciate what a great company JEA is to work for. So thank you very much.
Thanks, Valerie. Hey, Mr. Randy Hilton, please.
Hello, my name's Randy Hilton, and I've been an employee with JEA for 32 years. I came over with the merger of Public Utilities. I was a, worked as a water quality control person for the Public Utilities Department at the time. First, I want to say, give Jay a thank you for all the wonderful times we had together. And we do have a small momentum we want to give you as a remembrance of your time here with us and all of the hundreds of meetings we all held together. And we just want to say thank you very much. And of course, that's a sort of a presumptive thing. We think we know what's happening today, we really don't know for sure. But, you know, my first thought on this was, you know, how do we reverse it? How do we keep Jay here? What do we need to change to keep him? Second thought is to look at the rules and what do the rules dictate on how interactions between the board and the CEO and the community and the council and all that? How are those supposed to happen? I'd say we're left with a lot of questions on that. We, you know, what's the, what's the why? And who triggered this? And, you know, what's the background of all this? So we're trying to understand that. And as you might expect, we, as employees, have a void in us because of that, of not knowing how all this transpired and why. So we hope we get answers going forward. Employees of JEA, we got the best employees in the city. I always say my group is probably the most educated, most diverse per capita group of employees in the area. And we are professionals. We do our job professionally and will continue to do that. You know, our employees are dedicated, as everybody knows. And, you know, there's a, one of the things that comes out in my mind is there's a big difference in running a utility from a financial perspective and looking at the, you know, the cheapest alternative of present values with assumptions versus running a utility as a utility. I think running a utility with a utility model gives you the best long-term returns on that utility. If you do it with the, you know, the present value, cheapest alternatives, you're going to fall short long-term. So I think there's maybe some of the differences that occurred there. I believe everybody in this room has good intentions. So I know all of y'all, you are all really good people. Mr. Baker, I go to the YMCA where you made the donation, thank you. But, you know, questions, intentions, motivations, I know we'll do well going forward, but we'll miss Jay and we would like some answers to some of the things we don't understand. So thank you very much.
Thank you for your comment. And Mr. Logan Cross, please.
My name is Logan Cross. I'm a San Marco resident, reside at 1521 LeBaron Avenue. I'm also chair of the CR Club of Northeast Florida. I'm here today to learn more about the forthcoming leadership, leadership change. I'm particularly interested in the process and the criteria to be employed in selecting a new CEO. But I'm also here to kind of get a feel for what is the board vision for the future for JEA. Maybe I'll be able to glean something from the proceeding to this meeting that will give me some insight to that. But I guess one of the main things I'm interested in learning more about is JEA currently has an electrical integrated resource plan that will be guiding the utility for the next many years until you all decide to revisit that plan. The plan, though, on the surface, looks like it's making a move towards renewable energy. But in reality, the plan is waiting JEA to fossil fuel dependence through at least 2050 by investing in a billion-dollar combined cycle natural gas plant. So I think that it's worthy of considering the question, do you plan on continuing with implementation of the plan or do you plan to pass the plan while a new CEO is selected? I think it's important that you ask the question. Will a new CEO, we'll want to come into a utility where the course is already set? And if this plan is implemented as designed, it'll set JEA on a course to become an energy industry dinosaur. Any, any leadership change provides an excellent opportunity to chart a new course. And as a representative of the environmental advocacy community and those who are advocating for climate change, addressing climate change, we certainly hope that you will get a new CEO who will have a vision for making JEA something a little bit different from what it is now. Since its inception, JEA has been committed to its mission of providing affordable, reliable electricity without a lot of regard for the damage it might cost to the environment. It is our hope that JEA and the new CEO will set JEA on a course to deliver affordable, reliable electricity that also happens to be clean. In final statements here, any leadership change like this will eventually reflect back on you. So this next CEO selection is going to be very important in certain ways that will determine your legacy as a board member. So I certainly hope that the selection of a new CEO will reflect the fact that you was a board, had an awareness of climate change and the direction being taken by the industry, industry, industry as well. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Logan. And Josh Melko, please.
Hello, board. My name is Josh Melko, JEA customer. I live on the South Side as associate professor at the University of North Florida. Today, I'm going to actually talk about something covered at the last board meeting, which I attended virtually and got missed during the public comment period. So apologies, but I'm going to talk about sort of moving forward with the natural gas combined cycle plant. And, you know, wanted to just reiterate that this is a huge billion-dollar decision the board is going to make in the coming year to move forward and to quote, you know, former Chair Stein, and thank you for your chairmanship and service to the community. But he said, how do we know we're making the best decision we can? Right? Especially when it comes to making multi-billion dollar decisions. So I just urge the board to push for independent confirmation that, you know, assumptions made in selecting the natural gas plant were correct and still apply today. Okay? And that the model's optimum choice of natural gas is reflective of the goals of JEA, the community, and the resolutions you have passed. Deciding to move forward with the natural gas plant is a huge commitment, one that locks us in for 30 to 40 years. This is a Plant Vogel-type decision, and I know that's on everybody's mind when you're making that decision. And I assume JEA staff at the time of the Plant Vogel decision made sound recommendations, but of course, it's the board's decision to act, to ask for clarifications, to push back on assumptions. The EPA's greenhouse gas regulations will be in place by 2030, when this proposed natural gas plant might be beginning operation. So how will changing regulations affect permitting and construction timelines of that natural gas plant? How would it affect the cost of operating that gas plant? Might there be huge capital expenditures for carbon capture technology, right, for hydrogen retrofitting that would be passed on to residential customers? So please consider it a distinct possibility that a natural gas plant with a 30- to 40-year lifespan may face cost overruns and scheduling delays reminiscent of Vogel. JEA's long-range resource plan staff said that the EPA regulations are not currently in the financial plan or the resource plan. But let's be more proactive and run some scenarios incorporating those coming regulations. And another thing that is worth considering in light of that decision to move forward or possibly move forward with natural gas is that tax credit guidance for renewable energy is a lot clearer than it was back when the decision was first made to select an optimum scenario that incorporates natural gas. JEA can get a 30% tax credit for new utility-scale solar projects, and the North Side would get an additional 10%, so 40% off sale on JEA building and owning its own solar. The board's ultimately responsible for making sure JEA's path forward is one that's fiscally sound, providing reliable service and one attracting economic development, one benefiting future generations. So I just urge you to insist there be independent evaluations of the model that selected natural gas and clarity on how tax credits in coming regulations may affect the optimal strategy. Thanks.
Thank you. And could I add Ronnie first, I believe? And I apologize if we mispronounce any names here.
Good afternoon. My name is Ryan Barnes, and I'm a business manager for Laborers International Union of North America. I'm also a retiree of JEA. I worked here for 25 and a half years, and I've been a business manager of the water and wastewater side for the last nine. So JEA means a lot to me and I love JEA. I was asked to write a letter in support of Vicky Cavy, and I worked with Vicky when, because I also represent Atlantic Beach, Jax Beach, Neptune Beach, Nassau County. And there was some things going on. And so at the time, I believe, I called Paul McElroy and told him that Atlantic Beach was going to, wanted to go to Beachy Utilities. And Vicky got ahold of me and I worked with her with that and also Amelia Island Utilities. And I worked with her with that. But I want to tell you that Jay has been an asset to JEA. One of the things that I want to tell you is that anytime I picked up my phone and called Jay, whether it be a Friday night, a Saturday morning, or a Sunday or Monday, it didn't matter. He answered or he called me back. I speak for, I don't know, 400 employees of JEA. And my phone was rang off the hook this weekend. Well, I guess this means we're up for sale again. And I said, no, this don't mean we're up for sale. But they don't, a lot of the employees are concerned after what we just all went through and what we experienced. And unfortunately, the timing was bad on some of the things with the trial going on too. So I know that brought a lot of media attention. But like Randy Hilton, I've been, I started in 1983, so a few years before him. So, and then I came over in the merger. So I've been through a lot and heard a lot and know a lot about JEA and interworkings. And all I'm going to ask is whoever the next CEO is, is that they create a relationship with us, the union leaders, just like Jay did? And so we can make sure that our members and your employees that run this are aware of what's going on and how it's working. So thank you.
Thank you. And Mr. John Noonie?
Hello, I'm John PhiloTropic Resiliency Noonie, 83, 56, Bascom Road, Jacksonville, Florida, 32216. City Council District 4, CPAC Planning District 3, School Board District 3. First, I just want to, I have, you know, Mr. Stone, you had your short letter, a lot of got a short letter. And it's just a play off of an acronym, JEA. Jacksonville's Exceptional Access. Dear JEA Board Members, help. Noonie. And what I just wanted to say, you know, we're at JEA and Jay, just didn't get a chance to go kayaking with you, but you were always, you know, receptive, you know, in every meeting. And I do appreciate that. And let me just say too, you know, going forward, you know, in four days, we're going to have the River Accord. I participated in the last one over 10 years ago. You know, the River Accord is a multi-county agency collaborative. You know, and one of the big parts is water quality, public access to the waterways. And, you know, just six months ago, I participated in this resiliency thing. You know, I'm in here. And, you know, well, there's four, you know, components to it, but getting, you know, back to JEA. And I got to just, you know, give props to Mr. Hightower. You know, back when he was on the board, I went to the JEA board at that time. You know, just after two meetings, I had, you know, representation. And let me say, it was a very joint effort between the school board, you know, JEA and the number, you know, city council members as well for, and the legislation was 2016-18, which ultimately provided public access for the kayak launch that you see right behind the school board property. So, you know, going forward right now, you know, you know, we still need a sponsor. And, you know, where I'm going with it is, you know, in four days, you got the River Accord. And, you know, who's going to be showing up to that? You know? So in the meantime, though, I'd just like to hand this out, you know, make it part of the current record, y'all get this, you know? And and at this stage, you know, I've got 30 some seconds, we want to tell the world to visit Jacksonville. And let me just say, after doing this study, 90% of the waterways in Duval County, Jacksonville, is private, 90%. Only 10% is public. That is just horrible. And also, we're not going to get additional public access for a couple of years. Sure, you'll hear, oh, we're getting this, we're getting, but it's not going to happen, you know, as, you know, as soon enough. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. At this time, if I could have council liaison comments from Councilmember Michael Boylan, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Appreciate the opportunity to say a few words in advance. And prospectively, it caused me to take some time and take a look at, look back at Article 21, 2024-19, which we passed after years with the work and Council President Salem is here as well. To focus on, moving with Mr. Hilton, now there's a raise as to how we move forward. Certainly, the prospect of changing the asset in any way, shape or form is not part of the conversation, I know for a fact, for today. I want to affirm, however, one of the things we were very purposeful in the rewrite of that Article 21, which took over a year for us to do, was raising the bar with respect to the responsibility and accountability of the board. And I think my experience as liaison, I've come to appreciate that each board member takes very seriously the role they have to play and the demands that they are putting on the executive director of this organization. So I wanted to affirm the full authority of this board to do what it's looking to do. Council does not have a role. We did not have ourselves have a role in this process. It's an independent authority. Kind of, yes, I'm here to affirm that we, we as a council want to see this to continue to be an effective organization for the rape payers and the citizens, as well as the investment we as a community and as a city make with respect to that. So I only offer those comments to, and to say that I do appreciate the difficult decision. Would be easy to go along and get along, but as a board, you demand more. And I suspect we'll hear more why that that's the case. Lastly, Mr. Stone, I do really respect greatly your contributions to this organization. Some of my colleagues talked about how you are a stabilizing force. No question about that in that regard. But transitions happen and it looks like we're on the grounds for another. I want to say I'm here to support the decision of the board and I look forward to hear conversation going forward. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Again, I'd like to acknowledge the presence of Council President Ron Salem here. Thank you for being here. I wasn't missed. We do have two people online for public comments, so I apologize. In line, if you can go ahead with the first one, please.
To the chair, this is Jerry. Give me one moment, please. The first one is guest, but it's unverified. If you could go ahead and unmute yourself and begin to speak.
I think we're still having issues. I'm not even. I think we're still having issues. I'm not even reading.
Yeah, to the chair, I'm gonna go on to the next person.
Thank you.
T I, it's listed as T I P T J C. If you would go ahead and unmute yourself and begin comment. To the chair, give me one more moment.
Okay.
See if anybody else has their hands raised. There are a lot of participants, so allow me to scroll for a second. To the chair, I do not currently see any more hands raised.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so again, the revised agenda, I'm gonna start off with leading the discussion and then turn it over Jay for comments. So with that, I'd like to begin. Exercise an effective and appropriate fiduciary and governance oversight over a highly complex entity like JEA is not supposed to be easy. If it was, we as a board would not be doing our job. This meeting today is a direct result of this board exercising appropriate fiduciary and governance oversight, which the city government, our rate payers, and the JEA rank and file expect. Jay Stowe, our CEO, has submitted verbal notice of his intent to transition and we have agreed to mutually part ways effective today, April fifteenth, in his CEO capacity. The separation date will be fifteen August. This was a mutual decision agreement between the board and Jay to move in a new direction under new leadership. I want to clearly state this mutual decision has nothing to do with anything related to misconduct or any ethical transgressions. On behalf of the board, I want to thank Jay for leading JEA out from the two thousand twenty scandal and restoring focus and credibility to JEA. JEA has been on an impressive glide path with respect to continuous improving rating agency metrics, thanks to Jay's effort. Jay has been superb navigating JEA through the difficult and complex plant vocal process of finally becoming commercially operational. He's been very skillful in improving our debt to asset ratio. Jay has also led JEA and community stakeholders through a critically important integrated resource plan that resulted in establishing a plan of action with measurable goals toward improving our clean energy capabilities. All that said, JEA is entering a transformative era, about to potentially spend nine billion dollars in the next ten years in O and M and capital projects. We must get this right and exercise due diligence JEA customers expect of the board so that JEA operates as efficiently and effectively as possible. That is why we are in the IT and the invitation to negotiate process of hiring an outside consultant to analyze JEA's O and M costs, capital projects, and organizational structure, and ultimately advising the board on recommended adjustments on how to adjust the O and M capital projects and organizational structure. Jay has reached out to the board regarding transition services and separation agreement. He has worked with John Baker on the terms of separation agreement. And I believe the board has a copy of this. Is that right, Regina? So the board has had time to read it. I'd like to ask for a motion to approve JEA's board resolution, twenty twenty-four, accepting the terms, conditions, and provisions, other requirements of the transition, transition services and separation agreement, or generally leased between JEA and J C Stowe, and authorizing the board chair to execute the agreement in substantially the same form and format as a touch here to on behalf of JEA.
So moved.
Could I have a second, please?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion is passed. Thank you. At this time, I'd like to turn over comments from Jay, please.
Thank you. Before, I have some prepared comments that have just passed around to the, to the board. But before I do that, I've got a couple of things I'd like to say. And a, and a couple of things, people I want to thank. So, so first of all, thank you to the, the employees. JEA has, I think, set to be able to be the best that it can be. And I think that there are nods from the board when someone said that they hope that this doesn't mean that JEA is for sale. And I, I don't think there's anything happening here that would make that be the case at all. So that is still something this board has taken a motion on. The city council has taken steps towards and thank you. That was good timing to spill water, wasn't it? Next, I'd like to thank my wife Elaine, who's here today, and thank you for everything. To the employees, especially to the employees, you all are experts in your field. Keep on doing good things. I appreciate that the union leadership was here to speak thank you for this, but thank you mostly for the relationship, for the courtesy and respect, even when we disagreed. We were able to have conversations and talk through things. So thank you for that. To the team that supported me, there's a bunch of people, but specifically Madrika, you keep me straight, Nancy, thanks for coming back. There's others that I would like to be able to name. But I think just for sake of time, I should probably not name every single person that's been helpful to us. But I do appreciate specifically and especially the leadership team, Sheila Law, Ted, Ray, David, and Laura. You make me better every day. So that was my unprepared remarks that I also had to write down. The more prepared ones, it has been an honor to serve the people in northeast Florida for the past several years as managing director and CEO of JEA. Along with nearly twenty-two hundred employees, we've accomplished a lot. Chair DeSaville mentioned some of them. But some of them are like reaching the top ranking in the business customer satisfaction among south mid-sized utilities, moving from the fourth quartile to one spot they moved from the first quartile in residential customer satisfaction for the country. And I think that's mostly because they do the math at home. We might be in the top quartile. We adopted changes that led to upgrading bond ratings and issuing the first bonds in years that support the infrastructure needs of the system, launching the long-rated water purification project, setting clean energy and carbon reduction goals and beginning to work to achieve them. We've set transparent rate trajectories to support the significant capital plan that lies ahead, all the while providing the lowest combined utility bill among metropolitan areas in Florida. None of these achievements are small. That is not all of our achievements, but all of the achievements were team efforts. But by far the most important achievement in my tenure here was rebuilding the trust between the leadership, the workforce, and the trust of JEA within the community. While I'm proud of the strategic directing, of the strategic direction that was grounded in our core values of safety, respect, and integrity, so many JEA employees were already living those values. And together, we found a way to breathe them back into life in a place that had been hurt and broken for far too long. It's this achievement that led JEA to earning the fourteenth spot rank on the U.S. Midsize Companies and Forbes Best Places to Work list. It's this that shows up consistently in our employee engagement feedback, where JEA ranks in the top quartile among more than five hundred companies nationally. Regardless of your role at JEA, each of us has a set of decisions that comes to us every day, and sometimes in what I imagine can be the most vulnerable moments where the pressure mounts and the stakes are high. These are the ones that every decision through the lens of our values becomes most important. Making decisions based on our values will help JEA achieve goals beyond the imagination from just a few years ago. Having helped steer JEA to a better place and keep it on course for an even brighter future, the time has come for a change. After discussions with the individual board members and receiving their feedback, today I am announcing my intent to step aside to make way for a successor in the coming months. I'm sure that the board will develop a strong and transparent plan to bring in the right long-term leader for this organization. As I close this chapter, if I could leave anything lasting for any of you, it's to do everything you can to leave things better than you found them. Try your very best, never to settle for less than what is right, and to work like crazy to make sure reality matches the phrases that too often get left off when we refer to our values, putting the physical and emotional well-being of people first, bringing out the best in everyone, and having the standard so high that you are worthy of the trust people place in you. It's been a privilege to get to know each of you, and I leave proud of what we've been able to accomplish together. There's a quote that I like by Nelson Henderson, "The true meaning of life is to plant trees under whose shade you do not expect to sit." I hope the trees we have planted will yield shade for many people for years to come. Thank you very much.
Okay. At this time, I'd like to ask for a motion to appoint Vicki Cavy as JEA's interim managing director and CEO. Vicki has, as you've heard, Vicki has extensive experience with JEA, over forty-year career working up to the exec, working up to the executive level, and will provide the necessary leadership to maintain organizational stability while external consultant process initiates. I'd like to ask for a motion on this, please?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye, please. Anybody opposed?
Is there a?
I think you're.
Sorry.
There you go.
Is there a formalized succession plan for the company that we could review as a board before we make this decision?
There is no formalized succession pending, I'm aware of. Regina, I'll ask you, I'm not aware of any.
To my knowledge, General DeSaville, to the chair, the remainder of the board, I believe about a year ago, you had a discussion about succession planning, but I'm not positive that you finalized that succession.
It was specifically noted in the CEO's evaluation that we requested a succession plan, and I believe staff had begun doing that, but I don't believe there's been a formal one that I've ever seen.
Succession plan had not been finalized. The discussion had taken place about a year ago, but you had not finalized your succession planning.
Good.
Permission, I mean, does it, can I talk? Don't do mine. I just want to ask about process, because this, we've had two people from the public speak about Vicki, and I'm very supportive of Vicki, but I, this is the first, I came today not really knowing where we were gonna go from an interim perspective. And the way we operate, you know, the chair has a great deal of responsibility, and I have, we've all entrusted you in that responsibility. But could you share with us kind of how you arrived at that recommendation? And I, I think communication and transparency is gonna be really important for the rank and file, but I just was curious.
Sure. Yeah, at least from my perspective, was from the fact that, one, Vicki has experience. She's very knowledgeable of JEA at all levels. Number two, the fact that she, she, in her current capacity right now, is in a consultant capacity, but it also is gonna be linked in very tight with the external consultants that we eventually will be bringing on here, hopefully around May or June timeframe, just depends. And that's gonna be very key, because the whole purpose of the external consultants is to get an idea if we have it right or not, especially if we're looking again at nine billion dollars in ten years O and M capital improvements, if we have the organizational structure right, do we have the right people in the right slots, et cetera. So at least my thinking was, I think it's prudent to have somebody from the outside, services in the interim role, while also being associated with what's going on with the external consultants' analysis, which Vicki will be updating aside. And then from there, we're gonna complete a better picture, I think, of what we're looking at for a prominent CEO. So that was at least the logic on me, on my thinking.
And again, I thank you for that, because obviously none of us have talked about that. I just wonder how, have you had a chance to think through timing for a CEO search? Are we, we're gonna, are we naming an interim for a period of time? Have you had a chance to think through that?
I think that's gonna be obviously plenty of discussion for subsequent board meetings, but I think a really key sign, in my mind, the external consultants and wanting to get their feedback and insight. And that isn't gonna happen overnight. I think, and I know this danger is given an estimate, but I don't see feedback from the consultants anytime before December timeframe, if that, and that could be overly ambitious. We just have to have a better feel for what exactly our ask is of them on that. And then as we eventually interview the three or four consultants that have been necked down from the selection committee, we'll have a better idea on what they can do and their capabilities.
And then final question, comment, offer, is there are so many people that are looking for answers, the rank and file particularly. And I am happy to sit down, I've received phone calls from the rank and file throughout the past, actually, months. I'm always happy to talk to rank and file members. And I think that we, no matter what we do, need to spend some time doing some very small group town halls. Valerie, I remember sitting with you at a conference. I didn't know you went back to the field, by the way. Where are you? Lucky you. You know, there was a lot of need for more communication about our past transition, that we kind of worked some things out together a year and a half ago, I think, at the Women in Electricity, whatever that association's called. But I think we didn't probably do a great job communicating through the past transition, and I would challenge all of us to double down. And if you need me to be available for as long as I'm still here for those many town halls, it's probably the most important thing that would be on my agenda. So I'm happy to do that for the associations.
No, that's a great comment, Marty. And believe me, the whole world is aware of the ask by this. This is a significant day. It's a new chapter again. We understand the ask, and it's gonna be very important for transparent conversation of what's going on. And believe me, we, at every board meeting, all the common time, it's great to hear what you're thinking, so, so we know what's going on. And town hall type meetings will be very important. It's a good idea, Marty. Thank you.
And we should reinforce that we are not for sale.
Yes, we are not for sale. Thank you. Any other comments, please? Want to?
I would like to just record my, my vote is no. This is no commentary on Vicki nor her qualifications for the role. I would just, in the absence of a formalized succession plan, I'm a little more accustomed to seeing a COO take on a role. And that would be, that would be, that would be the comments that, that, that I have. So I will just record my, record my vote.
No, understand, and that's perfectly right as a board member on it. So thank you for that. Okay, so the motion is passed. And this time, I'd like to offer Vicki Cavy a chance for some comments. Vicki, please.
Thank you, Chair DeSaville. To the board, I'm very honored and humbled. Thank you for your confidence in me and the staff here at JEA. I fully understand this governing board's fiduciary concerns regarding O and M and capital spending, remote work, JEA's current organizational structure, and the need to be wise in increasing our generation capacity while being stewards of our environment. The board's decision to hire an external firm to do a review of these was very wise. It will be held. It will be helpful to us all. Yesterday, on Channel Four's This Week in Jacksonville, City Councilmember Johnson made a statement that I couldn't agree with more. Basically, he said, "The 2,000 employees in place at JEA are strong," and I quote, "If one person leaves JEA and the lights start to flicker, we've got much bigger problems." I can assure you, we don't have bigger problems. The employees of JEA persevere no matter what. We have all witnessed that for decades, time and time again. I want to share just a little of my personal history with JEA. I was raised here in Jacksonville and graduated from Sanderwood High School. I have vivid childhood memories of my widowed mother of five crying in our poorly insulated rental home because of her high electric bills in the seventies. She was a waitress. That was a time when JEA was among the highest electric rates in the country due to our reliance on oil and the oil embargo of 1973. Thanks to strong leadership and fuel diversity, JEA eventually had the lowest rates in the state. I became the mechanical engineer on the advice of my extraordinary math teacher, Ms. Marita Ng. After graduation from U of I, joined JEA. My mom was so proud. The suit I'm wearing today is a suit that she bought for me. I wore it on my first day here at JEA as a young engineer, forty years ago. Wow, forty years. The last time I wore it was at her funeral in 1999. I chose to wear it today in her memory and as a reminder of the people we serve and JEA's strong history of overcoming obstacles. Speaking of obstacles, we all know that electricity and water don't mix well, but JEA proved that they can when we integrated our water services from the city of Jacksonville into our independent authority in 1997, and further expanded by acquiring private utilities. We went on to provide watering services to neighboring counties as well. JEA is a municipal utility, an organization built for service. It succeeds when it's true to its purpose, providing reliable, reasonably priced utility services to the communities it serves. JEA serves this community, it doesn't sell to it for a profit. That's a different mindset. It may sound odd to say, but I love the JEA, its employees and what it stands for, municipally-owned public power in water. JEA is in my blood. I have worked with the best and brightest former and current colleagues here at JEA, many of whom are lifelong friends. I remember the day I told Paul McAvoy I was going to retire. He seemed shocked and came to my office the next day to let me know that when he told his wife Linda that night, that she said, and excuse me, "Well, hell must be freezing over if Vicky Cady's leaving the JEA." Well, I came back once, and now a second time. I'm pretty sure this will be my last. Some folks practice intermittent fasting, I think I practice intermittent retirement, works for me. To Mayor Deegan, honorable city council members, our neighboring county officials, and our community environmental leaders, rest assured, JEA will continue to deliver best and class service. I look forward to meeting and working with each of you. To the press, thank you for holding JEA accountable, continue to do so, and a special shout-out publicly to Nate Monroe. I don't think he's here. Nate, you are one of my local heroes, I salute you. The time from 2018 to 2020 was difficult, but that time is in our rearview mirror, and we are moving on, much to the thanks of Jay Stowe and his leadership. Maybe one of you guys in the press, or women in the press, can write a history of the last thirty years of JEA. You know, Royce, in 1995, I see Ray smiling, wrote, had a book commissioned on the first hundred years of JEA. We turn 130 in 2025, and it's a heck of a story in the last thirty years. To the valued and dedicated employees of JEA, thank you for all you have done and all you will continue to do. I've heard also the resurfacing of rumors. Please be certain that Mayor Deegan, the city council, or this board have zero plans to sell the JEA. Yes, we will be looking at our work for very work best policy, however, hybrid work and remote work is here to stay. A thoughtful and thorough review will be done. Yes, we will be looking at the organization to be sure we are aligned to provide the best service possible. It too will be thoughtful and thorough. Our goal is to be administratively lean and service provider focused. Leadership and I will be starting a listening and learning tour, spending lots of time in the field, meeting and talking to you, and scheduling hybrid events with groups. I look forward to reconnecting with those I know and getting to know those I don't. It's good to be back at my JEA home with the JEA family. You are the JEA. Keep focused on the part of JEA that you are responsible for and continue to do your best. Remember, you provide vital services that people cannot live without. You provide it to every member of our community, and you do it non-stop, twenty-four hours a day, three hundred and sixty-five days a year. Utilities that our community cannot live without. Yours is a most high and honorable job. I want you to know, I see this role as my calling to serve both you and our community. To Jay Stowe, courtesy and much respect to you, my friend. Thank you for your leadership and visionary thinking. Be very proud of your time here. It was a pleasure to work with and for you. I wish you and your family the very best. Thank you for the time, Chair DeSaville.
Thank you, Vicky. Dr. Faison has a statement, he lost comms with this virtually, but I think, Melissa, if you can read his statement, please?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you. "Colleagues, I have been attempting to log on to the meeting via phone and on my iPad for the past thirty-five minutes to no avail, as the WebEx system repeatedly will not allow me to join the meeting because the meeting is full, which is very unfortunate for me as a board member. I called Melissa a number of times over the last half hour to assist, but we weren't able to get logged on successfully. Nevertheless, I would like to share my appreciation to Jay for his service and leadership to JEA during what began as a tremendously tumultuous time for our public utility. His hand and hard work is steadily, the JEA should be applauded and firmly commended. In addition, I want to especially thank Jay for his commitment to diversifying our JEA leadership team to better reflect the diverse tapestry of our Jacksonville community. I don't recall the time we had the volume of highly qualified and competent women leaders and professionals of color represented in the senior leadership of JEA, and that rightly should be attributed to Jay's leadership and commitment towards the end. As Jay departs, I look forward to our continued work as a board, growth and excellence as an industry leader in providing high-quality utility services and support to the citizens of Jacksonville. Thank you."
Thanks, Melissa. Okay, at this time, for new business, I'd like to initiate to lock in membership for three committees, because we've got some work to do. The first is the executive committee, and as per our board policy, the executive committee will consist of the chair, myself, the vice chair, Rick Morales, secretary, Kwanza Humphrey, and then the former chair, Bobby Stein. So, that committee is set by our, by our board bylaws. The second one is the finance, governance, and audit committee, and I'd like to ask Bobby Stein to chair, if you could, and also like to ask Kwanza Humphrey and Ryan Lanigan to be committee members. And then the third, it's a new committee, the capital projects committee. First, I'd like to have Ray Marshall explain this, and then we'll talk on the membership. Ray, you could, please?
Certainly. Thank you, Chair DeSaville. Good afternoon, Chair, good afternoon, board members. We welcome the establishment of the capital projects committee. As the board is aware, there are significant capital projects underway as well as planned. The thought is that for those projects that will be brought before the board as either an information or action item, that the committee will serve as the gateway for presenting and vetting the projects prior to coming before the full board. This will provide board members an avenue to take a deeper dive into specific projects and to provide feedback. This is very similar to the meeting that we held with board members Morales and Baker that were related to the ratification requests for some of our significant projects. That meeting, that workshop gave a good opportunity, I believe, for discourse and feedback. Establishing the committee is timely, since the next board meeting, which is scheduled in May, will include updates and action items for some of our most significant capital projects.
Great, thanks, Ray. And so for this capital projects committee, I'd like to ask John Baker to chair it, if you could, and then Rick Morales and Dr. Faison, who I'll get with later, because I know he can't hear us with his, with the communication difficulty on that. So for all three of those committees, any comments or discussion on it?
Thank you for bringing committees back. I think these are really important point of clarification. Vicky is moving into an interim CEO role, and she had previously been our liaison to the consultants, presumably where that would fall into the committee that you described before, the consulting, the consulting work that we had hired Vicky to do.
Her clarification to come before that, that capital projects committee?
It would make sense. I don't know if we thought through that, but the interim CEO probably shouldn't be driving our consulting agreement that we hired her to represent the board on. I mean, and this is stuff we can think through later, but...
Yeah, and I, I think I understand, like...
So we hired Vicky to represent us, to go find a consultant to help us with capital projects. She is now the interim CEO.
We have a committee.
And the committee would be now the person, the people that are responsible for that outside consultant. Is that a correct statement?
Mr. Chair, if I could help out, I believe it's the awards committee plus Vicky that we're going to do the evaluation. Is that where you were on the evaluation of the consultant? Is that what you're referring to?
Yes.
The evaluation panel. So, at a previous meeting, the board authorized or designated the awards committee, which are three staff members plus Vicky in her capacity as liaison to serve as the evaluation committee for the consultant, and if I understand correctly, you're getting at, let's just allow the awards committee to do that evaluation.
I'm not suggesting that, because I don't believe that we had ever, I never saw anything back from internal audit on that whole process. So, what I'm suggesting is, since we hired Vicky to do that specific role, her role at our organization is now different. Should we find somebody potentially, Ray, on that committee, chair on that committee to represent? I mean, I'm sorry if I'm not articulating it well.
You're all saying it well, can't, excuse me, I'm sorry. Can I speak?
Yeah, absolutely.
I think you articulated very well, and under normal circumstances, I would think you're absolutely right. We hired Vicky to be our aide with a consultant to us, and I think that's really the job of the CEO. We were just not at the time where we felt that was appropriate, and I, I think, I would feel way more comfortable having her lead us in that regard than, than, than not.
When you're the chair, so I, I just thought we should at least have that conversation.
That's a great question, but that's just me.
Yeah, so just to clarify, this is what I'm clarifying in my head, we have a selection committee whose goal is to neck down the, whoever the applicants are, the consultants neck it down to two or three, and then we'll go through the process of getting that presented before the board and for us to decide who's going to be picking that, and...
As I understand it, the committee will have votes, and, the committee has votes and the board will have votes, and the total will be the one, so the both will have weights.
Yeah, it's just a new committee, I mean, just want a clarification.
But I think John makes a good point that, I would suggest that Vicky stays focused on capital and the decision, and, you know, what we do and how we do it, I might, I get back to making sure we take our time to find the right consultant, because we're going to be living with that group for a long time. I mean, so, I would say, I think her staying on the committee makes sense, and also say to everybody that let's, I, I know we're in a hurry, but let's take our time to find the right consultant, because if we're spending nine billion dollars in the next ten years, I think we're going to want the right consultant and take our time to find that.
Absolutely.
So I think doing it methodically as fast as we can would be my suggestion.
Right, no, I agree.
Mr. Chair, can I make a recommendation? Sure. I think we ought to continue to have a governance committee too, because I think the, and I speak to you as well, Michael, that I, I think there's, there's some work that needs to be done on that charter, especially with regard to the role of the CEO and the board. I think it was confusing, as written, and it, it needs to be improved so that we operate like a board and not an imperial CEO that is not responsible to, to anyone.
So, if I hear you right, John, then instead of having the governance part of the finance and not a separate governance committee to better focus on?
Just like you did when we first started.
Okay.
It functioned well when we had it previously, I would advocate for that, especially given some of the issues we've had around transparency and communication, so I would advocate for that.
Yep.
It's just basic good board governance. It really does fall back on the heels of the right thing to do.
Sure. Kwanza, any thoughts?
Agreed.
Yeah, okay. Okay, so for that, for the governance committee then, so we'll keep the finance and audit the same, allow the governance and for the governance committee, any volunteers to chair it? And I'm just looking, I've double-tapped everybody so far, sensitively, finally gone involved, anybody volunteer to be a chair for that?
Kwanza could, if you do.
I, I would chair it, but I've resigned, so I, I'll do it as long as I'm here.
I, I honestly, I, I can't, I have the secretary position and...
Okay.
Okay, let me do this, we, I think we're in a violent agreement, we do need a separate committee, let me think on some...
Maybe we don't need a separate committee, I forgot it was and governance, I mean...
Well, that's what I'm saying, it's supposed to be, but will it? What do you think?
What I would suggest is, it comes under my committee and let Marty focus on that, and then let's see how far we get.
Yeah, I, I was going to be the support of that, let's give it a try, let's not, don't start another committee, let's leave it under that committee, and if we find really is that taxing, it needs to be its own separate committee meeting, committee, then we'll spin it off and make it a subcommittee.
Marty will take that task on as part of a committee.
Right.
Would you be willing to do that?
Sure.
Yeah, that'd be great.
Okay, good. All right, so we got the committees set. Good, thank you. I appreciate everybody's time. Probably you all know that all this is volunteer, non-compensated, and again, every, I'm proud to be part of this board here, where everybody invests a heck of a lot of time on their own to make sure we're doing the best we can for the JEA, for the community, and for all the stakeholders, so, so thank you, folks. Any other new or old business?
Just one additional thing, if I can have the board consistent to work with HR... Just one additional thing, if I can have the board's consensus to work with HR and Ms. Cavy to create a temporary employment agreement, to service interim, if I can get your consensus, we'll finalize that draft and bring it to you for consideration at your next regularly scheduled meeting.
Okay, so, and does that require a motion?
If I just have consensus of the board, that's fine.
Okay.
And we'll bring it back for your consideration.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, anything else? Okay, this meeting's adjourned, thank you.
Thank you.